The term of outgoing Assessor Pat Meyer until the election in 2026. This morning, I received a phone call. That phone call indicated that things have changed. So at this point, I'm going to say that Brandy Nelson had asked to review the votes, did so this morning with Mr. Kement and Jody Thompson. So depends on who wants to talk, but I guess because Mr. Kement is the chairman of the Park County GOP, I will ask Mr. Kement to fill us in on what happened this morning. If you want to come on up, Martin, and use the mic, please, at the table. There's a microphone at the table. Okay, I don't know why this isn't. I don't get it. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. As you stated, I had to request last Friday to review the ballots. That request was polled. We were going to do that Saturday, had another request yesterday afternoon to review the ballots. So we set up a time to review those ballots. We did it at the Park County Public Library in the Wapiti Room. Those present were Jody Thompson, Brandy Nelson, and myself. There was a discrepancy because in the first round of voting, it should have been a multiple of five. And there was a discrepancy because when you ran those numbers, it was not a multiple of five. This was brought to my attention. My apologies to the candidates, the applicants, and to the Central Committee that I did not pick that up the night of the meeting. I'm not going to make excuses. It falls in the preview of the chairman to anticipate these things. It's something I did not anticipate, and so it's something that fell through the cracks. So to get back to the review, the way we did that is we made two tally sheets. I marked one. Brandy Nelson marked one, and Jody Thompson read off the ballots. In doing so, we found two ballots that were undervoted, and so those were discarded, and then we tallied up the remainder of the ballots. The count that came out differed from the count of on Thursday night. There were I don't know if you guys have this. Thursday night, the count was for Dave Baker, 69. And the count that we came up with was 67. Terry Call, 55 on Thursday night, and what we came up with this morning was 55. The count for Robert Ferguson on Thursday night was 76. The count we came up with was 75. The count for Allen Gilbert on Thursday night was 79, and we came up with 77. The count for Paul Lunchberry on Thursday night was 56. We came up with 55. And the count for Don Shreve was 82 on Thursday. We came up with 81. Now, what this review showed was that part of the differences were the two undervote ballots, so that had to come off. And then what we have ascertained from recounting was that there was one one person that didn't get marked on that tally sheet during that meeting. But if you, I'm 100% sure on these new votes, tallies, everything checked out. We would go, we'd do 10 at a time, and we cross check that with each other to make sure there was no mistakes. So if you add up the new tally, that is a multiple of five, and taking into respect one ballot that apparently was not turned in, and the two undervotes, everything checked out. Once again, I want to apologize to the applicants and to this body, you commissioners, and to my body, this Park County Central Committee, because it puts us in a very difficult situation. I've spoken to the Secretary of State several times. The best way to resolve this would have been to have another meeting and to review that that tie vote, because the two bottom vote getters had 55 votes each. Because of statute, the timeframe, what the statutes dictate, it's our timeframe, we do not have that luxury, so we cannot do that. I put a lot of thought into this thing, and I have not come up with a solution. I will take full responsibility for this mistake, and I don't want anybody else to blame. I have every confidence in our tellers. People make mistakes. We saw it in Florida with the hanging Chad. We've seen it in just about every elections. I don't think there was ever an election that was challenged that had the same result as the primary result. That being said, I guess don't know where to jump from here, but I will entertain any questions that any of you commissioners have.
Madam Chair, Martin, when they first came out with 217, you obviously knew that you had an under and over vote. Did you go to alleviate that right away by throwing out the ballots? Or did you just continue to count?
What, you mean this morning?
No, during the meeting on Thursday night.
No, because I did not pick up on it, and that's when it should have been, and that was my mistake. Mr. Mangold, I didn't, I just didn't process it at that time.
Madam Chair, so, Mr. Kement, and in disclosure, I was at this meeting. I'm elected as a precinct committee woman to represent precinct 41. So during that time, if there had been a tie, I think it's important for the public to know that per the rules that were sent out on the procedure for electing someone, a candidate, Rule Number 12 said that a tie candidate, in the event of a tie on the first ballot that results in more than five primary vote candidates or three final vote candidates, the teller committee shall distribute blank ballots for the members to vote to break the tie. So what should have occurred following, if the count had been correct, there should have been a tiebreaker vote, correct?
That's my understanding, yes, Ms. Money.
Okay, and then follow up. I was present, so when we did the runoff vote, and then we got to the third, the three votes, the three final candidates, on that tally sheet, there was also a tie. And it was between Mr. Shreve and Mr. Lunchberry, for a vote total of 46. And at that point, there should have been a tiebreaker vote that night, too. So there were two errors in my mind that occurred during the procedure that were not followed correctly. If you'll verify. So when we advanced to, so there was a runoff vote, and then there were the three. So when we got to five, then we voted, then the vote went to three. And in that three, there was a tie between two candidates, correct?
I don't think it would have had a bearing. If you'll give me a moment, I'll see if I can find my tally sheet. Excuse me, I'm not.
That's okay.
A little bit nervous.
You're fine. We'll work through this.
Are you talking about the tie between Paul Lunchberry and Don Shreve, correct?
Correct, on that evening. So on round two, you had a tie between candidates Paul Lunchberry and Don Shreve, which then should have gone per Rule 12 to a tiebreaker vote.
The way I understood it was that we, because we had two majority votes, Robert Ferguson and Allen Gilbert, I'm not saying this is right, this is what my thoughts were on it, is we had narrowed it down to three then, and the three, now you could be correct, I'd have to. I'd have to, you have a valid point there.
So I'm reading Rule Number 12.
Right, right, and that's what that says.
Yeah.
Tie, there will be a revote.
On the three.
See if Rule 10 addressed that.
Madam Chair, in my review and understanding of that, the rules, it did not address that. My concern as a commissioner is, you know, I have a lot of respect for every candidate that applied for this position, and I think we, as a matter of election integrity, we owe each candidate a fair chance at applying for this position. It's an important position. The process seems like it was flawed, if that's a fair word. So I'm questioning if we're comfortable moving forward when we know the process is flawed.
Well, surely it was flawed, because we wouldn't be here right, I wouldn't be sitting in this seat right now if it wasn't. We can say, you know, should have, would have, could have. If this would have been addressed when the Central Committee, if we would have seen a flaw like that, we could have addressed it when we voted to adopt the floor rules or the procedure rules. You bring up a valid point about that second round vote. There again, I will own that mistake, because I didn't catch it. And there again, I will apologize that I have to put this in your guys' laps, because it's not really, not fair to you, and it's not really fair to the applicants, probably. I will say, and not as a defense of myself, but it will be brought up, and Brandy and Jody and I talked about this, that we should have a procedural rule from the state GOP, a guideline to follow when this happens, because talking to Secretary State Gray and others in other counties, they've had issues if we had more of a guideline, because we don't do this every day. And I'm not using that for an excuse, but it's something that we need to address in the future. And I know that doesn't exactly answer your question, Ms. Money, but that's as good as I can do at this time.
Any other questions for Martin at this time?
Just, Madam Chair, this can't be easy for you.
It's probably one of the most difficult things I've ever done.
But we are, our hands are tied as well. Making a decision on a flawed vote count to begin with would put us in some jeopardy here with the county commissioners. So I can't come up with a solution for this. And yes, we had hoped that you had come up with a valid vote count. We can make this real simple, but.
Surely.
Yes, but I do appreciate you coming up.
I'm glad that we found the flaw, because I stayed awake a lot of nights since Thursday night, trying to figure this thing out and going through ballots, and I and I can see where you're making mistakes, because I went through those ballots a lot of times, and I didn't pick up on everything and and didn't find the real flaw until we sat down, the three of us sat down this morning and went through them. Once again, you know, people make mistakes. And, but I'll own this one, because it is my mistake.
Perhaps if this occurs again, we could lend you hands for helping out with the vote count.
Well, hopefully, we can get a sec guideline from the state so that we could just sit down. The way I came up with these rules and guidelines for the selection, I got from Goson County, they had done one for county commissioner. I know that Weston County is going through for a clerk of court position. I know that Sheridan County has gone through it. And, you know, life is a learning experience, and we're pretty damn prideful if we think we don't make mistakes. And that's, all I can do is apologize to everyone and hope we can get this resolved in the best manner that you guys see fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us the information and bringing it forward. We appreciate the work. The county commissioners are in a pretty precarious position because of the timeframe that the statutes have and the description in the statutes. We are required to act on the Central Committee's recommendation within five days. If we do not act, it is sent up to the district court, and a judge takes over. And he has 30 days, whatever process that is, I don't know. But he has 30 days to make a decision. As Martin mentioned, there are several cases around the state. There's not a lot of case law in this type of thing, but but those are the options that we have. And I, for one, just in comment, have trouble voting on a process that we know had a flaw in it. A significant, what could be a significant flaw, we don't know without redoing everything, which is not time available. So that's where we're at. Those are the two options that the county commissioners have.
Excuse me.
You bet. Thank you, Mark. So thoughts from the commissioners?
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd offer a motion. I've thought about this motion. I'm not sure how to word it. I would offer a motion that per Wyoming statute, I believe it's 22-6-120, small letter a, seven, Roman numeral seven. I believe that's the statute. Correct me if I'm wrong, that based on a process that has ineffectively provided us with a slate of candidates, with all due respect to the candidates, everyone who applied, that we move this to district court judge. I'm concerned about the liability of voting on a slate that didn't go through a process that it was outlined to.
Madam Chair, are we sure that that's the right statute?
It's the second page.
I'm not positive.
It is. Let me go back.
The way I'm reading this, 2018-111.
That's for the commissioners, and then it does say if the commissioners fail to fill any in this other one, so she's referring to both of them. They're here somewhere.
I'll read you what I have, Commissioner Stewart, or do you want me to?
We kind of need a second before we do a lot of discussion.
Second.
Thank you.
So let's see, it says, "If the county commissioners fail to fill any vacancy as required in this section within the time specified, any person residing in the county or legislative district who is qualified to hold the office may file a petition with the clerk of the district court of the county or legislative district in which the vacancy occurred, requesting the judge of the district court to fill the vacancy. Within 30 days after the petition filed, the judge shall fill the vacancy by appointing a person residing in the county or legislative district belonging to the same political party as the incumbent represented at the time of the election under Wyoming statute 22-6-120, small letter a, roman numeral seven."
Have a motion and a second. Further discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair, I'm going to just weigh in, just because I feel like I have to. You know, as much as I would really love to follow the procedure, the three candidates may not have changed if the vote were caught earlier, but we don't know that for sure. So the three candidates, I feel, are not not following the proper procedure as legitimate candidates brought forth. I'm not a lawyer, obviously. I see there is one out here in our audience, but I somewhat agree with you. How do we, I don't want to put the county in jeopardy and open ourselves up for their litigation or something for doing this wrong, and we have the option to let the law decide through the circuit or district judge, and hopefully, he can make the right decision. So I'm going to, I'm in favor of your motion at this time.
Any further discussion on the motion to present this to district court for solution? Hearing none. All those in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? I'm also in favor. Motion passes. So although we really appreciate the candidates coming, we had scheduled time for you all to talk to us for a couple of minutes. We have the resumes from the meeting. I'm not sure what we are required to pass on to the judge, but we'll find that out and figure out what the process is from here, and I'm assuming it'll either be in the newspaper, it'll be covered, or we'll make sure that you all are notified of what that process is going to be. So appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
To your commissioners.
Okay, did you ever have to do this? Did you ever have to do this? Appointed, elected.
They haven't done it since.
The Central Committee did. The Central Committee did. Give you three, okay.
We got time.
We're going to see you in a couple weeks, right?
Yeah.
We've got a minute and a half, yeah. What do you use for a? That's probably why. Our server won't accept it. He didn't, until he announced his retirement. When you have a first, I'm not standing up either way, I'm just saying, when you have a first deputy, it's kind of like Colleen's job. But she preps hands in case something happens to her. In case anything happens to her. I think that's the prep part of it, is learning the position. We have to start some interviews. I'm sorry, but we do have to get going. Okay, thank you.
Oh, boy, another fun one.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda, if we can get back to work here. We have determined that we want to begin the interviews for the state shooting complex joint powers board. The county is charged with, I think it's six positions in the long run. The city of Cody will have three. And so we did put out four applications, and the first person we'd like to visit with is Jennifer Tom, and she's here. Can we close that door? You can open the back one if you want. If people want to listen, they can.
Hi. Hi, I might be a little bit less exciting than your last conversation.
I don't know if that was exciting or traumatic. Okay, so I think to start, Jen, we'd like to just tell us a little bit about yourself. We do have your application and resume stuff. But a little bit about yourself and why you think you would be a good fit on this board.
Okay, so I think most of you I've met before, we know each other, but I'm currently the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. I've been working with the working group for the shooting complex since I took my position in May. So I wasn't involved in the very early stages of submitting an application for the shooting complex, but in the implementation stages, that's kind of where I've come into play, working with fundraising, marketing, getting this paperwork done, all of those kinds of things. So my background is 25-plus years in banking, executive level banking. I was the chief compliance and chief audit officer for an international bank based out of St. Louis. I moved here to Cody, well, to Wapiti a year and a half ago, and have been working in the chamber since May. So I have a rural background. I'm from central Missouri. I've been a hunter, fisher, shooter, been members of shooting complexes, been involved in different types of, you know, very amateur, let's say, very amateur activities. And I think that this shooting complex is a really good fit for the community. I think it's a good fit for Cody within Wyoming. I think it's a great opportunity. My primary point of interest is just the consistency of going from the working group to actually getting it implemented. And my background in organizational management, and I think, let's say, compliance, understanding the rules, the requirements, what the legislature is looking for with the complex and how we can actually deliver what they're looking for, I think adds a lot of value. I have a strong background in project management, keeping people on task, keeping people on budget, keeping projects moving forward. keeping people on task, keeping people on budget, keeping projects moving forward. So I think that all adds a lot of value, maybe not specifically from the, I've not been a competitive shooter. I've never been that level of a shooter, but I do think that organizational management is something we don't want to lose sight of, how we keep the state, the county informed of what's happening, keep the project on task and actually make it happen. That's what I wanna be a part of.
There were categories listed in the preliminary bylaws that we sent into the state and granted, um, we have not heard back whether they've been finally approved yet or not.
Right.
It's all kind of, as you're well aware, being part of the work group in flux with what's the legislature does.
Yes.
But in that listing, um, it does talk about the county having, um, a member from local county government, a member from the firearms and shooting industry, um, representative of education, conservation, shooting industry, representative of travel and tourism industry, and a representative of business economic. So I think on your application, you kinda mentioned the, the business development and tourism type thing, which both.
Yeah, working with the chamber, um, on the tourism and business development side. Also, uh, my husband and I own a business in town, so just being general business owners in town.
Other questions?
So, Madam Chair, then if I understand correctly, you fit the criteria of two different appointments. You don't care which one.
I don't care which.
Well, thank you.
Well, let me know who the other candidates are and I'll know I'm teasing.
And, and moving forward, I mean, it may, you may fit one better than the other.
Yeah.
We'll have to wait and see.
Yeah, I assume probably the economic developed one is the better fit, but I'm, I mean, a case could be made for both.
But it's nice that you, uh, you have that option as well, so.
I also, I also put, sorry, I interrupted you. Um, I also put in my cover letter, I know that there's been discussion of an advisory committee. If I'm not selected at, to the joint powers board, being a part of that advisory committee might be a good option too. I'm open to whatever's the best for the board. I just wanted to make sure that there was some consistency between those that put in the application and started moving it forward and those that took it from here.
You might correct me if I'm wrong here, um, coming from the working group, but my understanding of the advisory board, the bylaws call for the joint powers board members to be electors in Park County, which means you live here. The advisory board is not necessarily limited to Park County and could be nationwide shooters. I mean, that type of thing. Is my understanding of what I heard from the working group, is that your understanding?
Yes, my understanding is the advisory board is anybody else that might be interested in helping us.
Alright. Questions?
Well, I just wanted to say, I really appreciated you including like all your whole resume and your background. It was super helpful in like looking through the different candidates, cuz there's a variety of what information we got. So just knowing your background and it's a very strong background with your, um, masters in business administration and all of your experience, I think, is super helpful. And I really appreciated that you identified the areas that you would be interested in serving, like under the bylaws, you know, I thought that was helpful too.
Thank you. That was before I knew that the resume might get published publicly.
That's. Okay. We need a little lighter today.
I was trying to make a joke.
Any other questions come to mind? Do you have any questions for us? I guess I should ask that.
Um, I don't think so. I mean, I, I know most of you and have been involved in some of these shooting complex conversations. So I know it's a contentious kind of, it can be, as with all things Cody, a little bit contentious of a thing moving forward, but um, I think I've been able to talk to a lot of people and help them understand the benefit and how it's different from the shooting complex we already have, what we're looking for, how we beneficial, beneficial. And I think there's a lot to be said to somebody that can help bridge the gap between the opposing voices. So, um, yeah, I hope to be a voice of reason when it comes to the complex.
Okay, appreciate that. Anything else come to mind?
I just wanna say thanks for applying. And I mean, obviously you got the credentials, having worked with this group all, all along the way and, and then with both your, your travel and rec industry stuff and shooting. So I think, I think you'd be a good fit.
Thank you.
Appreciate you applying.
Thanks.
Okay, alright. Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to see if the next is outside?
Now, do we have to fill all six block spots right away, or can we reserve a couple of spots?
We don't have to do anything, by the way. In fact, I wasn't planning on voting on any of these today.
Okay, good.
Gathering information and we'll go.
Okay.
Is that alright?
Yep.
Okay. What does it say?
Do not remove.
Is he out there? We'll give him a few minutes.
Turn the ACR.
It's perfectly, it's perfect in here.
I'm fine.
Me too.
I'm gonna open this window.
No, you're not. Jack will have your head.
Oh.
So, so, yeah.
I figured out what's going on. It's my space heater.
Oh.
Um, nobody I have personally seen yet has had the flu shot and tested positive. I always watch that cuz I'm like, oh, she did. Or you have to wear a mask for, till March. So that's not reassuring.
Gee, that's. Oh, I love them. Do you? Yeah.
Not that kind of shots.
Well, Hans, it's coming for you. Two to three day incubation period. You can take Tamiflu prophylactically though. You can take Tamiflu prophylactically. It can be prescribed prophylactically. So if you're acutely sick, it's twice a day for five days. You don't have it, you can take it once a day for ten. Reduces your chance of getting it. Just, it reduces your chance of getting it by like eighty-two percent.
If it was eighty-three, I would. Sorry.
I don't want influenza A. I have this stuff memorized cuz I don't want that.
What is it?
The people I've seen are pretty brutally sick.
Oh.
It includes diarrhea. It includes diarrhea for a lot of people.
You better, you better run to Walmart. Oh, no, I was talking.
Good thing we all already ate lunch.
This, uh, this kid that works for us down there got a puppy and, uh, it's about six months old or so, but anyway, he left it in his upstairs apartment the other day for too long and it got into something and it ran around just.
Oh, yeah. Is this a new, new grandbaby?
Big boy?
Big boy.
I can't imagine. Did you get the house ready for it?
So this is the new grandbaby? Is that what we're talking about? Okay.
Just need a grandpa.
Oh, congratulations.
Congrats.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Klessens?
Why am I here?
Rest, no. State shooting complex, we have your application to be a member of the joint powers board. Um, we probably will not make a decision today. We are interviewing and trying to work through things. As you all know, this is a kind of a moving process at this point, um, and with some unknowns involved, so we're working toward that. But we appreciate your application. So I would like to ask you to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being on the state shooting complex joint powers board.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, uh, James Klessens, formerly with Forward Cody Wyoming, I was in the economic development, project development business for thirty-seven years in Montana and here in Wyoming. Part of what I did during that particular time is created a multitude of projects that were everything from community centers to fire stations, ambulance services. And my last big project is actually the Wyoming State Shooting Complex, um, when in March of twenty twenty-three, we published a white paper on pending legislation in the Wyoming Legislature and said, there's a really good project coming down the pike. What do you want us to do with it? We brought it to the county, we brought it to city council, and they said, let's go get this done. We weren't intending to be the necessary leaders, but more the facilitators of the process, but I think as you all know, sometimes, um, natural leadership just comes to the surface and, and, uh, you make things happen. So that's what we've done for the last, uh, eighteen months is pitch that project, put every, every bit of resources we could behind it, uh, mobilize the pretty large group of people to help build it. And so my, but what I bring to this process, quite frankly, is the ability to, uh, to get a project done. There's probably not too many people in the community know more about the nuances of the leases or the rightaways or the wildlife, you know, concerns and considerations or the legislative process that we're going through than, than, than I do. And I'm not saying that out of arrogance. I'm just saying that because I've been there. Um, I've been involved in it up to my eyeballs and decided that if we wanted to move forward, since I have now retired, I'm, I'm gonna have a little more time and ability to be able to invest into something. And you already heard what my number one investment will be is my grandson. Number two will probably be this project. So that's kinda what I'm, I'm here for. If you choose to, uh, in, in, include me in this fold, I'll, I'll do my very best to move it forward. And if you don't, you know, I'll spend more time with my grandson.
Um, as you talked through there, you're aware of the draft bylaws, excuse me, that we sent to the state, which.
Quite aware of them.
Cuz you helped write them. Not come back yet that we know of, um, as far as approved, uh, from the judicial system, but.
So one of the things that I heard yesterday from Kelly was that the AG has not approved them. And the process for that actually is you submit your bylaws and a notification of the creation of a joint powers board. And there's a separate form that I've already created that when your board meets the initial time and designates terms of positions and the leadership, then you submit all of that to the attorney general. And that's when that will happen.
Okay, I will review that process with our county attorney, making sure that everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, and I think that'd be fine. But, uh, yeah, I get that.
In those bylaws, proposed bylaws, there are positions that the county is kinda supposed to be looking for. If I heard you correctly, the position that you would be thinking that your strong point would be economic development.
Absolutely.
Okay. And just as we look through candidates to know where the strong points come out, that's kinda what we're looking for.
Yeah, that's why there's an at-large seat as well for some people may not fit in.
That's Madam Chair, thank you. That's what I was, James, I was looking through it myself and, and my question was gonna be specific. First, thank you for all the work that you've already done. One is basically creating this set of bylaws which we're trying to follow, um, not that they're complicated, but if you were you, you, I, I believe you, you could fit two of those categories and that would be the at-large as well. Now, obviously, I think we all realize you have economic, but we may have other candidates that are strong in that point as well. And, and since you have retired, and I mean, not that your input even at a large could not be centered around economic, uh, business plan or whatever, but, um, but you are willing to accept any position that we've put you in that we can, you would fit.
Commissioner Teal, uh, the rest of the commissioners, I, my objective in this project from the outset has been to see it get completed. First, to see Park County selected as the site. And second, to make the project happen, you know, to, uh, to, to get it through the legislative process. And when the governor signs that bill and we can mobilize the resources to take that initial design that, that we have, uh, firm that up and, um, and make it happen. I don't care who I'm representing or what constituency, I'm, I'm there about the project and that's where I'll be.
More challenging, we're trying to put together the best board as we can. And, and I can see you fitting in more than one spot.
Yeah, and I, 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 I hope that you recognize that a lot, a lot of people will fit in more than one spot. And it's really important that we look at this from the perspective of the first year and a half of this project is gonna be one where there's a lot of administrative contractual details that need to be done in, in the course of, of designing and building a facility. Um, there's gonna be need to be people that understand the shooting industry as well. That's important, definitely to, but, but we can bring those experts in. It's after that point when you wanna start looking at a joint powers board that's maybe more populated with people who are engaged in competitive shooting events. Um, and, you know, so the balance of that, that organizational tip, which is why we have the rotating bills. I'd anticipate, um, that I would probably opt to take a one-year term on this board so that I can go on and do the grandson thing and, um, but let somebody take, take a, a role in it that maybe is more prone to understanding the competitive events. I don't need to own and be involved in this thing forever. Just wanna see it cross the finish line. Thank you.
Madam Chair, so you're retired now and not doing anything besides?
Commissioner Mangold.
I'm retired.
There, there's a big lie out there about retirement, meaning that you're not doing anything. Because I haven't, I haven't let, let any grass grow since I, I've been working on Montana. I've been working, training my follow-up, my, my successor, keeping some things organized there. And then my wife has a list of honeydews about, looks like a roll of toilet paper, uh, that I'm working on too.
Madam Chair, I just wanna say, James, I appreciate all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
I know you really busted tail and spent a lot of time in Cheyenne and, and just appreciate all your work. Thanks for applying. I certainly think you have a fit here.
Well, I appreciate that. One, one thing I'll tell you is if you choose that you've got people that, when you're filling out your five people that you're, you're designated to, uh, to address and, and you have five people that would really be outstanding leaders for this, I'm in this thing whether, whether I'm on the joint powers board or not. Okay, so get that. You know, that, that may make it a little bit easier for you. I think Jennifer's gonna say the same thing to you. We're here because of the community. We're steeped in this community and we're going to do everything in our power to make this thing happen. So if you have that, don't, don't feel like I'm gonna be upset because I didn't, uh, didn't land a, a spot here because that's not, the role is, we wanna move it forward. This is a good opportunity for us to move it forward and, but if you got five great people, pick them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Kelly's true.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, sorry about the little faux pas with the, uh, uh, with the electorate. We knew that was in there and we were so blinded by the quality of some of the potential candidates that we just saw right past that. We saw what they could do for the organization and not necessarily for the, uh, the qualification side. That was, that's on me.
No problem. No problem.
I'm glad Kelly figured it out. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Send me a picture of that baby. What's his name?
James Cole.
Oh. Cool.
Hi, James.
Um, our next applicant is coming in via Zoom. This is an applicant. This is an applicant that, at the current time, owns property here in Cody, Park County, but does not live here at the moment. I left it on because she says in her stuff that she's moving here ASAP as she sells her business and would become a qualified elector. So I kind of left it open that we would interview her because of her interest. And then we'll go from there. But we decide when we get to the point of making a decision about final board members. If she's not an elector, she doesn't qualify. But if at that time she is, then we can move forward either way. So that's why I left her on. And she hasn't signed in yet. Okay, so she's due at two o'clock. There are, I think, two of these that are Zoom. But I'm not sure what to do, so I'm going to call Mr.
Hello. Hi, I apologize. I had gotten an email yesterday that said I was disqualified. And so I thought that meant that the interviews were off.
Oh, no. Cindy, let me explain a little bit about where we're at. The bylaws that have been sent in, suggested bylaws, because the Joint Powers Board does not exist yet and the shooting complex has not been finally approved by the state of Wyoming, the bylaws are just suggestions that were sent in. But those bylaws do state that our joint powers board members must be an elector in Park County, Wyoming. So in looking at your resume and, and the information that you sent, I had a couple of questions with the commissioners and, and just looking through it as to, you know, by the time we make a decision, you may be an elector in Park County. As you indicated, you own land here, you're trying to move here, sell a business and get here. So I kind of left it open that we would go ahead and interview you. If we get to the point of appointment to the joint powers board and you have not been able to make that move, you will not be qualified. But at this point, I think we will go ahead and interview you and see what happens, if that's okay with you.
That sounds wonderful and I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay. Well, the first thing we'd like to do, thank you for applying, but we'd like you to tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in being on the Wyoming State Shooting Complex Joint Powers Board.
Absolutely. As, as you know from the resume, you know, I got it, I've had a history with the military. You know, I, originally I grew up in California and have been kind of lost working for the, being in the Navy and for the Navy for the last way too many years that I want to fess up to. But I'm on the verge of retirement from the government now. And through that time, I've gotten education. I'm a comptroller for the, the Navy, meaning I oversee budget and report to Congress for all naval aircraft. And so that's my purview in the financing world. So with that, I've gotten this history on how to interact with government entities, the budgeting requirements. And so that has a little bit of effect, but the biggest takeaway I had from that was when they paid for me to get my masters through the Naval Postgraduate School, which was an executive masters in business. And the timing of that went really well for when my husband and I decided to take our love of shooting and open up our own indoor shooting range in Maryland. And with that, we had some amazing mentors. And I say amazing mentors because by then I had been on two US women's teams for the, for handgun shooting. And I know you guys brought in Julie Golub for the, for a consultation. Plus, she's on the board with the Cody Firearms Museum. She and I were actually on the team together in 2014. And then she and I both shot over in France together. She was on a different team, but in Chateauroux, France, 2017. So we've traveled all over the US, shooting, shot internationally, shots at some amazing world-class ranges. And so when we opened our own business, we said we wanted to open the top-of-the-line business and we're kind of pigeonholed here in Southern Maryland. And so what we did is we consulted with some people over at the NRA range, had a mentor over there. And we took lessons learned and business models that they had to create our own successful business. Now, I tell you, we opened this business in 2019, right before COVID, with a thousand dollars left to our name. And the process was unbelievable. It was, it's been said before, there's a thousand ways to fail and only a handful of ways to really make it happen. So how does that relate to Cody? Well, like I said, with this military, I have never been at home. And so growing up in Southern California, I grew up in a small town called Solving, which was a little Danish tourist town. During COVID, we were able to network and, because that's one thing I, I do very well is network and leverage contacts. And I worked with a gentleman to secure ammo. And that, when my husband went on an elk trip the next year, I said, hey, why don't you swing by Cody? And go meet, his name was Felix Carazales. Go meet Felix and just say hi. And when he got there, he said, you know what, Cindy? I think we found our home. And so from that moment on, we decided to really pursue everything, to finally retire from Maryland, get out to Wyoming. Now, when this shooting complex came up, I was like, holy cow. I, I don't want to run a business for myself anymore, but what an amazing thing. And having shot at world-level venues, it's like, man, we've started a range before. This could be a lot of fun. So if, if I could bring anything to the table, hey, you guys got me. And, you know, my personal mantra is, whatever I do, this is kind of, it's, it's a quality. I'll say it's a quality. Whatever I do, I want to win. And in this case, I want Cody to win. And from what I have seen, you know, there's several challenges in play. But whatever I can do to, to be a part of it and help Cody out, fabulous. If not, I'll, I'll be a, a customer and a shooter at the range.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. Um, the, you kind of filled a few things there. But in the proposed bylaws that have been sent in, there were kind of, I'd say, categories that the county commissioners are supposed to look at to fill the positions on. there were kind of, I'd say, categories that the county commissioners are supposed to look at to fill the positions on this board. And so the categories, one's local government, another is the firearms and shooting industry. One might be the education, conservation, or shooting industry from Buffaloville Center of the West, travel and tourism industry, and business and economic development, and then a member-at-large. If you had to pick one of those, which one fits you the best?
I would say the at-large. I think, you know, Cody has so many power hitters in the industry out there already that I would think that the gun industry portion would probably, well, would, in my opinion, would be better served from pulling from somebody who has a direct economic impact from that shooting industry. And that, and obviously I don't hit those other ones, so I put myself in the at-large.
Okay, appreciate that. Um, questions for Cindy?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Cindy, just looking at your resume, it looks like you could be an all-star out of this joint powers agreement. And I think that with your name, it would certainly give it some credibility. But I want to know when you're moving to Park County. That's the key thing. And you've got my full support if you can get here quick enough.
Thank you. Thank you. So that's that giant elephant in the room. And that's why when I kind of read about this, I'm like, man, for once in my life, I feel like I check a lot of boxes, except for this one. So we have a property off 14th Street that's lovingly referred to as the Molesworth House. So we started there, but we're on our search for our permanent property, which is off Elk Road in Wapiti. Now, if we can remember back to the 1970s, that house embraces the shag carpet and everything. So we have a major renovation to do out there. And then the last anchor here is this darn business. My government job has already confirmed me to telework full-time. So I can go out there at any point in time that we get that property remodeled and our business sold. So the horrible part is the timeline would be tough. I don't have an exact date for you. On the flip side of that, my schedule is very fluid in that after the election period, because every time we have an election, I get anchored down here. I can be there whenever you need me. My son's a pilot for United, which is very fortunate. So I can fly back and forth, but as far as permanent residency, I don't have a date.
Madam Chair. Cindy, thanks for applying. There's another alternative here. If we were to fill these positions prior to getting your residency, there's an advisory, going to be like an advisory committee to the Joint Powers Board. And so that might be another option for you. Once you get out here, you'd still have some skin in the game and help influence. And I'm certain that moving forward, your experience in competitive shooting would be very helpful as well.
Right.
And it's very interesting, you know, this day and age with technology is that how much can be done without actually being right on site? And the other part of that is that when you get me, you also get my husband. Because he's my other half, and he and I are an amazing team. So even though it's just me who put forward a resume, my husband's been an area director for a major shooting organization, USPSA. He's ran major matches. And he has his Wyoming driver's license, and he spends over 60% of his time out there already.
Good to know. Thank you. Any other questions right now?
Madam Chair, just one thing, Cindy, I really was impressed by your resume as well. I think it was very thorough. I liked your cover letter. I like, it was just a lot of detail, so I felt like I knew you before I came in. One other thing that we talked about is the terms are staggered. So if your timeline's a year out and someone else that we appoint serves a one-year term, that's always an option, too. I mean, I think you bring a valuable skill set to the table for this position. So just wanted to say thanks for applying and thanks for all the detail in your resume. It was impressive.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. And like I said, my husband and I had an outstanding conversation last night, especially on the heels of getting the notice that I was not qualified. And I joked, I do, I want to win. And when I do something, I always want to achieve what I'm setting out to do. And yet, in my first, you know, in ages 25 to 50, I sat out to say, how, you know, how many checks on the block could I get? How could I own and just really excel at everything that I do? And now at this next quarter of my life, I want to not have it focus on me. I want to do something for somebody else. And that's why I was so excited to be a part of this or have an opportunity to be a part of it. And whatever capacity I can assist and just try and help and leverage off of the experiences we had, I'm here for you guys. And I just, I appreciate, I appreciate being able to interview.
Thank you.
And we won't hold the Navy against you.
Spoken from the Marine Corps.
I had to say, I think there's one member of the Marine Corps out there.
Do you have any other questions for us, Cindy?
No, ma'am. The only thing that I have lacked in this process is that a lot of the background research that I've done as to where the project is to date has been just kind of sleuthing around online. So if at any point in time, do you guys want, need consulting? Like I said, anything I have to offer you guys, I'm ready and willing to do it, regardless of title.
Okay. Well, I'll just tell you that right now, our biggest thing is we're waiting for the Wyoming Legislature to make a final decision. When that final decision's made, we'll either get to work really fast, really hard, or we're done. So that's where we're at.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, with that, thank you very much for taking the time to interview, and we'll be in touch.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Our next interviewee is Carrie Payne.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thanks for having me.
You bet. Thank you for coming in and applying for the position. So you're kind of aware of what we're looking at. And I guess what I'd like you to do is tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being on the State Shooting Complex Joint Powers Board.
Sure, thank you. First of all, I'd like to commend those of you who were on the selection committee for the great job that you did. I watched the live feed when you did the presentation. And I mean, it wasn't even a contest. I mean, you absolutely blew them away. So any of you who were involved with that, and several of you were, I commend you for that very well. I have been in Cody for about 14 years. Eight of those years have been part-time. The last six, we moved here, my entire family. My son is here. My daughter is here. My grandkids are here. I came out and they all followed me. And so we're all here and have been, and we love it here. You may or may not know, I own the Cody Mergantal Pawn Shop on 14th Street. I own the building and the business, which I started several years ago. I'm just finishing a term on the CASA board, one of the tenants in the building. I'm sure you're all familiar with CASA and what they do. I've been with them a couple of years. I come from Pennsylvania. I come from a business background. I'm sort of a self-made guy. I spent 47 years in the auction business. I spent 42 years as a bank director. And in that position, we ultimately, four of us purchased the bank, and we turned the bank into a, from a $75 million bank into a $1 billion bank in a number of years. And in that position, I also was responsible for corporate governance. I was chairman of the board of the financial company and the secretary treasurer of the bank for a number of years and was responsible to the federal government for a lot of things. And of course, any government project is always under the microscope. And of course, that's how this one will be as well. But my skill set in my life has led me to land development. I own a land development company. I have built, with the help of others, because I think committees are very important. And those committees, we built seven branches of a bank. I also built a large auto auction from the ground up myself, 10,000 square foot building on about 30 acres, and operated that particular business for a number of years. So I've actually done many projects from the ground up for myself. I also have sat in your chairs. I spent six years as a commissioner of our township. And I was chairman of the board of that particular group as well. So I did submit a resume and all these things were on there. If you had a chance to glance over it, I tried to keep it simple so that there wasn't anything that was complicated. But one of the things that interests me the most is I've had an interest in firearms for, from the time I was 16 years old. I've owned three separate entities. Currently, the one in town here has an FFL license. And we sell and trade firearms here. Also had two of those back in Pennsylvania. So I'm very familiar with the firearms industry. My son and I have spent many hours at various clubs and ranges over the course of time. The Paul Myra Shooting Club, which is very famous for an Olympic biathlon gal by the name of Jamie Byerly, who won the biathlon Olympics. She and my son shared the team at that time. And so I am familiar with a lot of the venues and the events that are held throughout the country. I have visited the property here on two occasions. I live probably closer than any of you. I live off of 3DX at the very end, very close to another guy that you all know. He runs the county, a guy by the name of Darrell Stewart. I live right down the street to him. Do you know him, Mr. Stewart? Well, he's my neighbor. So I can almost walk over to where it is going to be. But anyhow, I have toured it, and it's, I mean, it's perfect. I've probably not seen anything any better than that. So the choice, in my opinion, was great. I'm sure that there are going to be people in this county and city in this area who are going to disagree with this because it's a tax-dollar project, so we know what that criticism comes with that. I've got pretty thick skin. If you can run a pawn business and an auction business, you have to be pretty thick-skinned. So the criticism that comes with it is always deflected by those good decisions that you make. And I'm a pragmatic gentleman. I like to think that I'm neutral. I have no personal political agenda. I only serve on boards that want to be independent and make decisions that are best for whatever it is that they're doing. So by creating a mission statement for the board and understanding what it is, what their task is, and how to achieve that task is what I'm interested in doing. So that's me. I've been around the block a few times. But I've done a lot of things, and I even was the deputy coroner at one time for seven years. Hopefully, my services will never be needed there. So, and if you have questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. And why I wanted to serve was because I have an interest in the industry itself, being in the firearms business. I see a lot of people that come through my shop, and I really, it's fun to have your pulse on the people who use the ranges. And I have a lot of people who come in that use the current range. And believe me, in the last four or five months, as I watched this unfold, the process, I checked the temperature of those people, and I say to them, what do you think? And, you know, what do you think about this new range? Well, I don't know anything about it. And then you tell, oh, well, so, and then you get those that, why, they done this for the taxpayers' money. You know, our taxes are high enough. And so deflecting some of that negativism is nice because I'm at that position where I can talk to them one-on-one and tell them, you know, this money was set aside, how it was set aside, because I have researched it all the way back to understand what I would be getting into. And so I don't have any fears other than, you know, just, I think the general population and the people of Park County are going to want to be favored over anything that occurs by out-of-town people because that's their nature. And so, you know, there may be some things that I can contribute in memberships and ideas that go with it. And I think when you have a diversified board of directors that come from different walks of life, you can cover all those bases and do it in a civil manner that, you know, gets you where you want to be.
Okay, thank you. We did send in preliminary bylaws to the state. Nothing is finalized yet until we get the Joint Powers Board in place, apparently. But in those bylaws, it does talk about that the positions that we appoint are kind of for specific reasons. So I wanted to list those and then have you tell us which ones you think you might fit.
Sure.
The first one is a representative local county government. But the next one is representative of the firearms and shooting industry, representative for education, conservation, and shooting industry from Center of the West, representative of travel and tourism industry, representative of business and economic development, and an at-large position. So those are the kinds of things that were outlined in the preliminary bylaws for us to look for. Where do you think you fit?
I think I probably could fit two categories. I think the firearms industry, I have spent 50 years not only buying and selling guns, but collecting guns. There's probably only two people in the world here that have more than I do. But that would be one of the things, I think, and ad hoc member also, would be one of those things as well. The gal you just had on the screen, I know personally. I know Cindy Thomas. I know her husband Steve. I know them both. And they're really good people. And I hope Steve decides to enter his name in as a potential person to run the complex because you could be the guy. They both have a lot of experience. They really do. They're good people. But either one of those positions, I could see myself contributing.
Okay. Questions from the commissioners?
No, just thanks for applying.
Well, I'm happy to do that. So I appreciate you all giving me the time to come in and see you and say hello. And if there's anything I can contribute in any other manner, as I said, I've been there. I've watched it. I'm ready to go to work as soon as the legislature gets off their butts and says, go ahead, here's the money.
Could be a few weeks.
Could be.
We're waiting. Do you have any questions for us that come to mind?
I guess the organizational thing of a committee like that, and then the bylaws, if there are others. You said they have been sent to you already and dictated by the state. Is that correct?
No, it goes the other way around. We propose them to the state.
Oh, we propose them, okay.
But in discussions, it sounds like we have to do both at the same time. We have to put the Joint Powers Board together and everything gets melded. So the bylaws are down there on preliminary review. We are not going to make a decision today. We're doing the interviews and kind of determining where things might work. So when we make a decision on the board, it'll be ready to be seated if and when the legislature approves. So that's where we're at right now.
Yeah, because that was one of my things that I was really involved with in the banking industry. And our bank was the corporate governance of how things operated in bylaws. My other members of the board were constantly, when I would bring up a problem, they would just like go like this, you know, because they knew they were maybe wrong, and I had them by the hairs. But corporate governance is always important, especially if a board's going to get along. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
That it? Okay. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Take the hot seat?
Yes, sir. Did you say the whole room's the hot seat? The whole room's the hot seat.
You guys got her cranked.
To sauna.
We're trying to test out our new system, make sure it really get hot.
It's working. Kind of old. I just layer up in the winter, so it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, Mr. Ross.
Madam Chair. Do I have this thing on?
Yeah, you just gotta kind of keep it close and speak up.
Okay.
So our next candidate, who has applied to be on the State Shooting Complex, is Glenn Ross. So our next candidate, who has applied to be on the state shooting complex is Glenn Ross. And first, I would like to say, Mr. Ross, really appreciate the work you've done up to this time. Instrumental.
Of course, yes. Thank you.
So we'll start with asking you to tell us a little bit about yourself. And if you would let us know. Why you're interested in continuing or not. Either way, with the joint power.
Well, I I've lived in Cody since nineteen ninety and and my wife Nina and I have raised four kids in Cody. So we call it home. We came from Montana, but we're Wyomingites and. Our. We're really committed to the community. I think both of us are and we really enjoy Cody and I enjoy giving back and. I'm currently serving on Forward Cody Board and the Museum Board and. Stay pretty active in the community. So one of the things I got. Somehow pulled into was this shooting complex about a year ago. You know, we were contemplating it in the community and and then decided to go for it as a team and Forward Cody kind of took a leadership role there and. Being treasurer and on the executive committee, I just kind of naturally. Fell into that or or went towards that project and really have. Been maybe a silent co-chair, I guess, for for James Clussen's because he's been the leader. But I've kind of been there every step of the way since we really started into this thing. And I believe in our Second Amendment rights and what that does for the next generation and our. Children and the lifestyle and the, you know, the things I think we value here in Cody and kind of our history. So I think it's it's really a perfect fit and I think it brings economic development to our community in a strong way. So. I'm I'm just an avid hunter. I would say it that way. I'm not a shooter or competitor in any way, and I don't bring any of those, you know, that knowledge to the. To the forefront. But I have a keen interest in making sure that this. Does get placed in Cody and that we get it through the legislature. You know, beyond that, I'm just offering to help if you guys see that you need extra help with the transition. You know, I think there'll be people more experienced and more skilled and that bring other skill sets to to the table, hopefully, you know, with with shooting expertise and running gun ranges. That at some point will become better candidates than me. But during this transition, I just want to make sure you guys have. Plenty of options and that we don't drop the ball. That's what I'm concerned about. Not that we ever would, but I want to be part of that team that helps pull it across the line. Let's say that. Now, having said that, I I would be. If it's okay to explain a little further, I I would be happy to assist. Whoever you choose on the board and just kind of transition that and, you know, maybe be involved in fundraising later or. Make sure we don't lose track of the commitments and promises we've made and, you know, how we've sold this thing to the public and to the state and continue to help those efforts. And I can do that from a volunteer spot and seat if asked to. And I'm ready to do that. I I don't need to be on the board to do those sorts of things. So I'm. Willing, very willing to be that person too that kind of just helps out when called upon. Like, I think I'm going to go to the legislature next week and the next week. I already did one week. So it's like, who else?
A little promo thing.
Yeah. We got to get it approved.
Glenn, as we worked through the the bylaws and the. Draft bylaws that were sent to the state head category. If you had to. Put yourself in the categories, one of the categories, where do you think you go?
Can you say those again?
I sure can.
Chair, I I. I kind of know him, but I've.
That's fine. Local county government, firearms and shooting industry. Education, conservation or shooting industry with the Center of the West. Representative of travel and tourism industry. Business and economic development or at large?
I'd say the latter latter three, you know, tourism, I I was served. Twelve years on the Park County Travel Council. Have have been pretty active in the community on tourism. And business, my background is banking, like thirty five year year career in banking. So I bring a pretty strong financial. And construction management and project management background. And then at large, I guess, could be anyone that you deem.
Okay.
So.
As you know, it'll be a meld of those positions and the city.
Yeah, yeah, I know. There's a lot of coordination going on and overlapping applications and.
So questions for Mr. Ross?
No, just thanks for everything you've done so far. And it's been a hard road.
Yeah. Seems like this year has gone fast, right? This year's gone fast. Yeah, it seems like it just never ends. There's always something on the project.
I just want to say, Glenn, thanks. We wouldn't be here. Without you.
Thank you.
Already.
Glad to be a part of it.
You're sincere when you say you're going to help along the way regardless of where. And I know you will. So and I can see several positions in here that you would fit. So. We're trying to put together a well-rounded. I think that was a put original plan, so. We'll see what we come up with.
Yeah.
Thanks regardless.
Commissioner, my hope was. My hope was that you would have so many great candidates that obviously I would be very clear I wouldn't be needed and I could just help from the side.
Yeah, we're still going to be coming to you.
And that's why I threw my name in that is I just want to make sure that it transitions well and in case you didn't get enough. You know. Applicants that you felt. Then at least it gives you some other second class choices like me. So. The other thing is I would appreciate it if I were to be considered. If you could consider me for only a one year, like in in the theme of transition, right? And and I I think I could add value during construction, management, financial oversight of projects and development like. You know, some of that's consistent, no matter what you're building. And what you're doing, reviewing contracts and following through and, you know, financial accounting. But the more this becomes a let's run the range today and let's figure out how to run this business. Yeah, I have overall business knowledge, but you guys might really value some people that have. Got a lot of real good experience in that, right? And I. I've come to find out what three gun is, but I didn't know it from two gun or four gun earlier, so.
We also have a position as lobbyist right now.
I think that's what I'm in now, Commissioner. Yeah, because and if you got any ideas for me, because we're going down there to sell this deal and all this for not like, I hope this, man, we got to get it through the. J joint appropriations committee this next week.
Right.
To get it in the supplemental budget the next week. Right? So let's all be.
A bit of work still to do.
Yeah.
But.
And then you.
Madam Chair, I I would just say. Glenn, I think you can't underestimate the importance of historical knowledge. I mean, you just, when you're transitioning in something this big. I think it's imperative to have the historical knowledge. So I think that skill set that you bring as well as like this just impressive. Amount of community involvement and your banking history is just. I think it would be invaluable and I really appreciate the offer for a year term and then I have a lot of respect for the thought of turning it over to people. You know, that once it becomes more of a business, I I really admire that. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anything else for Mr. Ross?
Plus, I want to stay married. So that's another, that's another key point there of why I would say one year, please, or nothing. Either way, I'm great.
We need your wife to co-sign.
Yeah, and I and I won't be going anywhere, so you can you can use and abuse me without putting me on the board, so.
We appreciate it. Certainly. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Anything else?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. No.
Okay.
Probably be calling you on other things, but nothing to do with this.
Great.
Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Brad.
And Godspeed on getting a great board there and hopefully you, all this process pays off and you actually can improve it.
There you go.
Some or one of you or more of you may be making a trip or one of those trips down there.
We're all down there next week. Well, Mr. Manuel can't because of work, but the other four of us are.
Okay.
So.
But you can tell the appropriations committee at the at large that I said.
I may call you on this, which I just mentioned, if we, it is, he is critical to this.
I know.
He's on joint appropriation and needs to make the mention.
If you would send me a, send me a text of when you're meeting with them, just if we are free enough to make it, then we sure could. We'll see where we're at in our training. Well, it depends. We are in the Capitol Building on Thursday. I'm actually in a committee head meeting on Wednesday. Let's see where everybody is.
Yeah, I know. I've been looking at Larry for two weeks. I just don't think joint corporations set the hardcore name for our website and text them again.
Just let us know. Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Safe travels.
And then we're going to go back to Jason Byer.
Now I am sweating. Yeah, now it is hot.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Jason Byer.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for applying to be on the state shooting complex board.
Absolutely.
First of all, I I know you provided us with some information, but if you could just please tell us about yourself and what your interest is in being on the state shooting complex board.
Absolutely. My name is Jason Byer. I live up the South Fork with my three kids and my wife. Trying to give them a hobby hobby farm experience. We've got a little bit of land and and trying to. Teach them how to how to be resilient and run a little business profit and loss with their chickens. So it's exciting. I currently am the head of marketing at Gunworks in Revick. Before that, I was the head of marketing at CrowdSpring, a global design marketplace. We had over two hundred thousand graphic designers focused on building brands. For small businesses and and large companies around the world. Focus on on building and scaling brands, looking at very cost conscious ways of growing. Those departments, you know, as a marketer, I think a lot of people can be be as marketers, a lot can be persuaded by vanity metrics, you know, I really don't care how big an email list is or. How many page, how many Facebook likes are on a page. It's it's like finding those channels that make the most sense for for growing that business and scaling it. So I enjoy hunting, enjoy shooting, both bow and rifle. I've taken bulls on public land with a bow and just did my longest kill shot this year at eight hundred and thirty yards on a on a bull elk. So. I like both disciplines. I like evangelizing it to to all of our our guests that come through. It's. It's fun to try to work with those misconceptions on on the hunting and the shooting background. So. Enjoy the evangelization part just as much as as building a business. So.
In talking about your your background there. There are draft bylaws that have gone into the state. As you know, this process is nowhere near complete till it gets through the legislature to get moving, but the draft bylaws. Were pretty clear with the city and county on appointing. The board and the areas of the board we were to look for expertise. So I'm going to list those and then if you tell us where you think you might fit. We have a representative from local county government. We have a representative from the firearms and shooting industry. We have a representative for education, conservation and shooting industry. Representative for travel and tourism. Representative for business and economic development and a member at large. Can you pick one or a few of those that?
Business and economic development, shooting sports industry, obviously, and then education on the shooting sports side.
Okay. What were you hunting at eight hundred yards?
Oh, it's an elk.
Okay, I'm just checking.
Yeah. What's that? Yeah.
Questions?
Just one question as far as qualifications. Are you a registered voter?
Yes.
Okay. And you've been here five years.
Two thousand nineteen, six years, yeah.
Okay. That's one of the criteria in the. Joint Powers Board bylaws is.
Sure.
Part county elected.
Perfect.
Questions? Have you, have you looked through preliminary things about the site and about?
Yeah, a little bit. I mean, Garrett Wall was the one who suggested I apply Garrett narrative. Obviously, been very, very excited for it. So we've been talking. I work very closely with both of them. Growing and scaling Gunworks and Revick. So, yeah, we've been been talking about for the past year and that's an exciting. I guess my question would be, you know, what are your expectations for this board? Obviously, there's a little bit. Different opportunities on the education side and. But but what are you expecting from a on a regular basis, kind of now and into the future?
I think if I understand correctly and they can all weigh in, but. Right now, the organizational thing will be the biggest part, getting going. We know that in the funding scenario that was provided to us, this range has to be open by the end of two thousand twenty six, if everything goes through the way the state suggested it.
Sure.
In the funding model. So that will be the first thing is how this joint powers board can work together to try to achieve that goal. What comes first? What's next? How do you mix these things? So that's a little different in my mind than. Where we're completely headed with it in the future. There is a draft plan that I saw at a couple of community meetings that kind of show where some of the venues might be and. And if you can get started on some of those, how that would work and what the plan would be. So it's, to me, it's a lot of initial thoughts on on building. The site out itself. And then this would warp into more of the management and having events and doing those kinds of things eventually.
True.
But I think there's two different things here. One is getting it up and going.
Right.
And then the other is the continual.
I built on the South Fork and, yeah, two years worth of planning and building and managing. So, yeah, understood. What are the biggest hindrances you guys think to getting this off the ground by the end of twenty six?
Well, the county has committed to building the road. That is a fairly large commitment and is going to take some time. We have to work through the BLM permitting, which they are working on. But we're not going to spend any money starting on that road until this project is approved. So that could be the end of March. First part of April. And so the timeframe to to get that done to the point where there could be some equipment moving in and out, I mean, there's, there's a lot of little time. Issues here. In the meantime, I think the board would be finalizing some of those. Ideas or thoughts about where things go, how you're going to do it, what companies you might be looking at. Sponsorships, that's come up a couple of times in the meetings that I've attended, you know. Gunworks want to.
Sure.
You know. Put their side on one of the ranges. I mean, that type of.
Yeah, that can be done concurrently and and really get a lot of excitement.
Get things moving that way. Do others have any thoughts about?
No, I, madam chair, I somewhat agree. The the first phase, initial setup of the joint power board needs to be more. Expertized in the in construction layout of what. We want it to look like, building, and then we'll move into more of the the marketing end of it, selling it and. Bringing competitive shooters here. That's my gut feeling, but there's they're going to be, you need a little bit of both, but we need to. For startup, we need, we need somebody that we just can't build something and it's not likable, you know.
Well, and the design.
Expertise.
Absolutely.
And then. And then later get into more of the the to sell it, to get it here. And along that, you're exactly right. We're going to financially, the state's going to pay the biggest share, but it can't happen with state funding alone, not for what they want.
Sure.
So the sponsorships and things like that, bringing extra outside money in is going to be paramount.
Yeah, and I would suggest it. It wouldn't be a looking for sponsorships after everything is built. I think doing that concurrently. You know, to see what Pilatus needs in order to sponsor it, you build that into the actual design now. I just came back from Dallas Safari Club in Atlanta. And, yeah, so the. The tangential businesses, you know, that that would want to sponsor this but have their own design needs are are critical to think about early on.
The other thing to think about is is. How this board would want to manage this shooting complex if they would hire a specific manager. You know, how that's all going to sort out. That will be up to this board. So it may, that may be included as hiring a a manager to to keep moving things forward.
Right.
Any other thoughts?
Just, Jason, do you think that your your work with Gunworks would be beneficial to the shooting complex? And do you think that? Mr. Davidson would. Help you with this as well?
Yeah, absolutely. That's why I was encouraged to apply. So it's a. You know, we just look at is, you know, we love the community. We're here. I built my forever house. I'm not leaving, you know, so it's like I worked remote before this job and. Long before a pandemic made it. Exciting. So, no, I I want to invest in the community. Gunworks wants to as well, and I think there's a lot we can do. Together.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions come to mind?
This gives her behind.
That we're right hanging in there.
I have one real quick. I I'm looking at your resume. It says here that you put together a weekly podcast for Brown Gunworks. More educational or?
Yeah, it was very sporadic before I got there. We we would launch a product and and decide, hey, we need to let everybody know about it. And that was the channel. So we moved into a weekly model where you can really build in. Yeah, it was very sporadic before I got there. We, we would launch a product and, and decide, hey, we need to let everybody know about it. And that was the channel. Uh, so we moved into a weekly model where you can really build into people's schedule, you know? So it's every Wednesday morning at five AM is when it launches. It's a very, uh, really, well, we're not up pushing the button. It's scheduled. We're not that cruel to somebody. Uh, but it, it's, it's, it's four different themes. It's, it's centered all around education, but it's either educating around the product, educating around, uh, long-range shooting tactics. Uh, it's educating around the industry. And so we bring together, uh, other, uh, entrepreneurs and, and CEOs of other products and, uh, it's in education around, uh, the Gunworks brand and, and what we stand for and what we're trying to do in the community. Uh, it's a heavy investment where I don't think people realize, you know, finished, uh, rifles come out the front, but raw materials coming out, uh, in the back. And, uh, so we explain that process, give people a peek behind the curtain.
Thank you for applying. I can see you fitting in many of these different categories. You know, shooting industry is probably your strongest point, um, representing them. Um, but your skills could easily be used later on in many, any of these fields. What kind of followers do you have?
On the podcast? We'll get over 10,000 downloads an episode.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
You haven't seen it yet?
You know, me.
Mister.
I'm all about social media and podcasting.
Okay.
You've got AM radio figured out.
I listen to KPOW. That's my favorite DJ.
Sorry.
It's getting late.
Right? How long, when did you guys start?
Eight o'clock this morning.
Ooh.
Do you have, um, any other questions for us?
I don't think so. I think, you know, if, if you think it's appropriate, that, that, that's great with, with my background. I think the only thing I would lead on is, is, uh, you know, the background might look like I'm, you know, more in the scaling side of the business, but I, but I think a lot of these things can, can be baked into the foundation and really should be to have a strong, clear plan about, you know, who are we attracting with this and, and what is the value proposition for a shooting, uh, complex here in Wyoming? So. Perfect. Thanks so much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And Kelly, if you would watch for the other one. Um, Brian, can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, thank you and thanks for coming in a little bit early.
You betcha.
Appreciate it. So the first thing we'd like to do is have you tell us a little bit about yourself, um, and then also why you're interested, um, in the state cheating complex, joint powers board.
You bet. Thank you. Um, Brian Mick, pleasure. I've, I've met a couple of folks on the board or been in front of the county commissioners once or twice. Um, Cody resident, live out in Wapiti, going on four years, uh, spent almost forty in Omaha, Nebraska. Um, I'm a half-time lawyer, but I'm still a nice guy. I don't, I don't sue anybody. Um, ma- mostly transactional corporate real estate stuff. Uh, grew up in Wichita, Kansas, and I remember at an early age pheasant hunting up in north central Kansas, uh, just south of the Nebraska border. And that's really where I got interested in the, on the shotgun side of things. I'm a avid, uh, and learning more. I got my first bull elk three years ago and my second one this year and having a lot of fun with that. Um, my interest in joining the board, I, well, one, I applied for the, uh, the Lura advisory board some time ago, was not selected, which is fine. Um, but you know, I've got a lot of, I, I feel an obligation to just broadly provide, uh, support to the community and, and engage in a lot of community service work. And I think this is part of that. Uh, I'm on the board of directors at the Cody cupboard. I'm on the board at the Cody Buckle Club and an officer there. Um, work a lot with, uh, Don Vanderwerf and trying to support some of her, uh, single parents, single mom organization stuff. Um, trying to get more active in St. Anthony's church. But in any event, uh, I'm, I'm interested in the shooting complex. One, I think it's a, a great crowning achievement for Cody to, um, beat out the other three, uh, proposed sites. And I'm happy that a site has been selected and hopefully he didn't pay JD too much to terminate his BLM lease, or maybe you're both going to use it at different times of the year. Um, I have a son, my, my, I, we have three children. Uh, when we lived in Omaha, my son actually went to the University of Wyoming. He was on their shotgun team, on their gold team, uh, for several years. So I got exposed to a, a, and, and I know that the, the shooting complex obviously has a broader function than this, right? But I got exposed to the shotgun sports, um, when my oldest started high school. And he shot for Creighton Prep, which, uh, had a heck of a, a trap team. And so we had the, you know, state meets in Donovan, Nebraska by Grand Island. I had an opportunity to, uh, go to San Anto- San Antonio, uh, and spend time at the national shooting complex down there. Uh, I think, um, I bring not only an interest in this facility and, you know, shotgun sports and shooting in general, but I think I can, if, you know, kind of allocated or delegated some responsibility, uh, could really work on bringing the high school and the collegiate, um, shotgun sports, trap, ski. uh, could really work on bringing the high school and the collegiate, um, shotgun sports, trap, ski, wobble, um, sporting clays, five stand, all that stuff. I'm assuming that those, um, those sub specialties, if you will, on the shotgun side will be part of the shooting complex. I have not, I have to admit, I have not seen kind of the preliminary plans, uh, on the layout of the facility. Uh, but I'd be really interested in trying to make connections, uh, not only on the high school side, but the collegiate shooting side. And for instance, there's a, a regional shoot every year for the colleges in Raton, New Mexico. And there's no reason while thi- why this new facility couldn't hold a Mountain West region or a Northwest region type of event, um, for, you know, three dozen colleges, if you will. Uh, and then ultimately, once proven that logistically that would work, uh, then I think down the road, you, you, you make a run at displacing San Antonio. I know it's a, it's a big goal, uh, but I don't see why it wouldn't be achievable, frankly. Um, it, we're gonna have the, a- and I'm hoping, you know, it's, it'll be interesting logistically, uh, if, you know, more of the, the events are in the spring and the fall versus the summer, because we, we have the tourist traffic in the summer anyway, and I don't know what, what, uh, private parties may be planning for, you know, some more, uh, uh, hotel rooms and overnight capability for the area, but that's, that's another topic, I suppose. Um, so my, I, I'm, I'm friends with the Higgins Brancini Shooting Foundation down in Dallas. They have connections with all of the major, um, vendors, if you will, uh, Browning, Winchester, you know, on and on, Fiochi, uh, et cetera. So it would be nice to network, maybe even work on, you know, a co-sponsored or a, or a sponsored, uh, you know, foundation grants for younger people, uh, to be able to, to shoot. I think when you, when you take a step back and you look at how the, the hunting numbers, um, both, uh, rifle and shotgun are, have, have kind of declined, uh, over the last couple of decades. I think it's really important, frankly, for not only the success of this facility locally and, and regionally and nationally, but just the sport in general, to be able to get, you know, uh, these high schoolers more opportunities, um, to be able to shoot at a, you know, regional and national type events, get them interested, keep them interested, and not only, you know, trap skied, et cetera, but also in the field, right? So that would be a, a big part of, uh, my focus if, uh, I were allowed to, you know, be on this, uh, joint powers board and help, uh, develop, um, activity and, and exposure for the shooting complex. Um, I also think that I could help just from a negotiation, contract, logistical, financing, you know, grant-type perspective all across the board, um, uh, really help in those areas also if needed. I don't plan on stepping on anybody's toes, but I think I could be a pretty decent resource, both on the functional side and the, uh, logistical, legal, et cetera side. So that's kind of why I, that's in, in a nutshell, that's why I submitted my application, and I'd, I'd like to be seriously considered for a position.
Thank you. I can, uh, relate to your conversation about your kids, because my grandkids are now into shooting, and they went to Nationals in high school, and now the granddaughter's been shooting in San Antonio for the last two years.
That's awesome. Yeah, and it's, it's so cool also for these kids from all these varying backgrounds, right? I mean, you have, uh, Midlands College out of Fremont, Nebraska on, on, uh, you know, one trap house, and you got, uh, a team from Yale on the other.
Yeah.
So it's really good for them to, to interact with people from, you know, different cultural perspectives and, you know, backgrounds, et cetera.
Sure.
Congratulations, by the way. Sounds like they're pretty good shooters.
It's, it's kind of fun. Um, there was a, a preliminary set of bylaws done to send in to the state, uh, to get that ball rolling. Um, in those preliminary bylaws, it does talk about the makeup of the board, and of that, the county has six seats and the city has three. Of those six seats, there are different criteria, and I'd like to read those to you and then have, uh, tell us where you think you fit in it, whether it's one place or two or three or whatever you think.
You bet.
The first one is a, as a representative of local county government. The next one is a representative of the firearm shooting industry, or a representative of education, conservation, and shooting industry. Um, Buffalo Bill, Center of the West was mentioned there, too. Um, representative of the travel and tourism industry, a representative of the business and economic development, or at large. So those are the areas that they have the prospective board members listed for. Where do you think you fit?
Well, definitely in the last one, and, uh, we had a little bit of a, we were spinning, I think, on the, I, I missed a little bit of that, but, um, I, I would, to be honest with you, uh, you know, maybe there's, uh, on the economic development side, uh, technically, I'm not on the travel council or anything of that nature, but, um, obviously, I'm interested in, in, uh, economic development tourism, because I think that's the lifeblood of Cody, frankly. Uh, some people get a little upset at the traffic, uh, you know, on Sheridan in the summer, but the reality is, uh, tourism provides a lot of revenue to the county, uh, through that slice of the sales tax. And I think to be able to promote, uh, this shooting complex and other things to do, it's rea- it, to me, it's really important to promote alternative tourist activities and interests in addition to the park, you know? It'd be great if people thought of Cody in terms other than just one of the ways to get into Yellowstone, right? So I think I could, I mean, um, Jennifer Tomma is a, a really good friend of mine. She's obviously picking up on the, uh, Chamber Commerce side. Uh, Mike Darby is a, is my neighbor across the highway, is a good friend. Uh, I could interact with both of them on the, uh, promotion of travel and tourism, uh, for not only the complex, but the, the county at large.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions? Mr. Mick?
Uh, Brian, I, I, Lloyd Teal here.
Hello, Lloyd. How you been?
I'm, I'm pretty good. Uh, I hope we, we won't hold the lawyer thing against you.
Right.
That would help or not, but I hope it, I hope we don't need one for the, for the joint powered board. But no, I really don't have any specific questions. I just want to thank you for, for volunteering to, to step forward. Um, we do have some great applicants. Um, we aren't, I don't know if Dossie mentioned, we're not going to make the decision immediately. Um, we, we're actually still hoping legislation in Cheyenne follows through and, and brings this whole thing to reality. So we're kind of dragging our feet, but when we, when they say it's ready, we'll need to jump. But, uh, thanks, Brian, and seeing you again.
Yes, sir. Good to see you. And I think it's great that you guys are doing all this groundwork now, so that when you get the go-ahead, you can, you can hit the ground running, right? Rather than extend out the process and, and have to go through this later. So that's, that's.
Yeah, our, uh, our timeframe's going to be extremely limited. Um, if this gets approved through the legislature, it'll be toward the end of March that we find out, and the range has to be open and usable by the end of twenty-six.
Okay.
By the funding scenario that the state has set up, so.
And of course, we have such a long construction season in Park County. There's plenty of.
Right. So any other questions? Thoughts? Do you have any questions for us?
Uh, I don't at this time. If I think of something after the fact, I'll try to, you know, shoot you an email dossier at your chair, and you can distribute that as needed, or.
Sounds good.
At this juncture, I don't. I'll, I'll try to do some more homework myself, frankly. Um, between now and the time you make a final decision, and maybe I'll have some, uh, additional input or questions at that time.
Okay. Appreciate that. Yep, just let me know.
Okay.
All right. Thanks again for checking in with us.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Bye.
Is our last gentleman anywhere?
He, um, he, he wore clothes on.
Yeah.
And then he just bought Cassie's from Mel.
Wait, what?
He's talking about running against China. Next time, yeah.
We probably need to adjourn the meeting, so we'll need to be up to adjourn the meeting.
I'm sure he.
We are.
Several thousand.
Okay.
Have a chair move to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
You want to pose?
Aye.